Good evening. We welcome you to a political forum, the City of Sweetwater. We have with us today candidates for city commission and we'll have them introduce themselves in just a moment. Early voting starts tomorrow in the City of Sweetwater and continues and will end on June 7th and Election Day on June 12th. Our candidates today, three candidates running for two seats, so you have to make a decision on two of these gentlemen and tonight they are going to make a case as for why they should be one of the two that you cast your vote for and we appreciate them running. We also want to say a special thank you to Fairweather Financial and Jim Fairweather for sponsoring our political forum. And now, kind of how we're going to do this, and we talked about this with the guys before we went on, we're going to give them a moment for opening remarks and then we're going to ask questions for, on specific issues pertaining to the City of Sweetwater. They'll each have an opportunity to lead off and lead off answers to the questions so it's fair for everybody. I've instructed them, they have a length of time to get an answer in. I will hold my hand up and they have 10 seconds left and then if they go over, I'm not being rude for those of you listening on the radio or watching, if I cut them off, that's not me being rude, that's, they went over their time and so we're trying to be fair and get this done in an orderly manner. So with that said, again, we thank you for tuning in with the candidates here for city commission for the City of Sweetwater. Early voting starts tomorrow. So first, I'm going to give each of you guys welcome and thank you for being here today. Give you each an opportunity to introduce yourselves and tell us why you are running and we'll start with Cotton Upton, please introduce yourself.
Well, the reason I'm running, try to make a difference and been running since 98. Been running since 98 and thank it's going to be my last go around, but had a lot of fun at it, had a lot of support and people helping bought my cards and stuff and couldn't get no cash this year, they're too high. Everything going up, but I appreciate everything everybody's done for me, you know? I like to try to win a seat, but running against two good people, but somebody's going to have to lose, but I ain't never won something, I can worry about it. I let the people decide about what I'm going to do and that's where I'm going to leave it at.
Jim Stutz, I previously served as commissioner and mayor several years ago and I was fortunate to be appointed to complete Commissioner Bill Stockton's terms. I've served the past three years and have been involved in city government again and I just feel like we have projects started, programs started, plans for the future that I'd like to stick around and help get finished. And I believe I have the experience and the knowledge to make a good contribution and I'm asking you for your vote to allow me to do that again on your behalf.
Again, we're asking the candidates to pass this mic back and forth, that way you all can hear them really good. So our final candidate, introduce yourself, tell us why you're running.
Hey, I'm Branham Lovinggood. First of all, I'd like to thank the radio station and Brian and Fairweather Financial for hosting this today. My name is Branham Lovinggood and I am running because I feel like there's a, I have been given a lot by this town and I'm ready to give back and to help. I am a small business owner, I am also, I've been the chairman of the Sweetwater Regional Planning Commission for the last three years and so I feel like there's a lot of, a lot of stuff that I can bring to, to the city commission and that is why I am running.
Well, thank you very much and we'll come down here to Jim and lead off our first question of the night and I guess everybody would agree, the hot button issue right now, well there's, there's two or three, but the main one is Sweetwater High School. Been a lot of discussion about should the city, can the city system take that over and make that a city school? That's currently right now a county school. So I'm going to give you each candidate a minute to give your thoughts. Now, I want to be straightforward with this answer. Do you think the City of Sweetwater should take on the high school? Yes, why? No, why? Jim, go ahead.
Well, I guess Brian, to be honest with folks, at this point I would have to say no. Basically because I don't feel like we know enough to make an intelligent decision about taking on that kind of burden and it would require looking at what the dollar cost of it is going to be. We don't know that at this point. You know, we need to know that our school board and our administrators feel comfortable taking on a high school environment which we've never had before and we don't know that yet either from what, you know, what their opinion is of the project. I think we have to be mindful that, you know, if you look at the last grade cards the state put out, I think Sweetwater High School had a D, you know, so why is that so? And what needs to be done to correct that and is that something we need to take on? So if you're saying make a decision right now today, I don't know enough to put that kind of a burden on the people of Sweetwater with what I know.
Cotton Upton, yes or no, and either way, why do you think the City of Sweetwater should take on Sweetwater High School? You got a minute?
Well, I'll say no because there's a lot of work to be done, there's a lot of money and a lot of times we don't know what we getting into. See, that's the biggest project out there. Everybody wants to try to get it, but I always said if they want it, you let people decide and let them vote on it, put it on referendum or something, but I don't think we need it. In all my lifetime, we ain't had it while we wanted it now. That's, that's a big step up there when you go and do that. Getting teachers might harm more people than nothing. If you do get rid of it, what are you going to do with them two county commissions you got on the first district? They won't no longer be there. See, it's a lot, the more to see than I, when you go to do something and don't know what you're doing. So I'll just pretty much leave well alone, let them keep it.
Okay. Branham, same question, yes or no, should the City of Sweetwater take on Sweetwater High School? Either way, you answer that, why?
That's a very hard question because we don't have the information that we need to make that decision. If I had to make the decision today, I'd say no, just because we don't know the budget impacts, but I would like that to be a yes because I think that if we could see all that and we could work through that, then we would know. And if, if that was possible, I'd love to see the cities take on the high school, but it has to make financial sense and until we find that out, there's no way I could say yes. But yes, the high school is, would be a great asset. It would help our schools because part of the grading in the, within the, within the state system is that you have a high school and so we're missing out on that and so with regard to the Sweetwater city system and so it impacts the Sweetwater city system in a negative way not having a, a high school. So I would like to see that, but at this point, until the financial numbers are crunched and it is, it is determined, you know, what the actual costs are going to be, it would have to be a no until we know that and know that it will not be a bad thing for us.
All right, and we'll come to Cotton here on the second part of this question, so all three of you, and obviously yes, there's a lot of unknown questions, especially financially, the cost of actually getting it, the cost of operating it if you had it. And we'll start, the second part of this question, do you think there's any way the City of Sweetwater could obtain that without increasing property taxes and would you be in favor of increasing property taxes to get it? Cotton, you got a minute?
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want no property tax. I think people's taxed to death now. See, people's taxed to death now. The place where I live, at Paradise, where the county and city paid this year a thousand dollars. Ain't no bigger than that, but that's part of it, but people's taxed to death and they don't want to hear that. And that's anywhere you go, already moving in there, that's probably the taxes is going up on us. Nobody wants that anymore. That's just the way I feel about it, you know?
All right, thank you. Branham, is there any way that the, the city could even take that on without increasing property taxes and would you be for doing any of that if that became the case?
Brian, that's part of the, that's part of the equation is what is the financial impact going to be? What is the, what are the day-to-day costs? What's the cost to obtain the, the building? What's the cost to run the school? What's the, what are all those factors? And until we know that, then there's no way we can give a good answer on that. But if, if it did come to the fact that we had to have a, a major tax increase to take on the school, I question that because we don't have a lot of room for more property tax increases without starting to hurt people's budgets. The county taxes are significantly higher than the, the city taxes now and if we are taking out the city, or the high school and not even being, you know, having any county school systems in, in our county schools that within our city, we are, and we're also being, we're being charged the same property tax. I find that to be quite distressing and, and if we have to gain a more property tax because of that, that's going to hurt, that's going to hurt city residents.
Let's come back to Jim and get his take on this. Jim, is there any way you think that city was taking it on, you wouldn't have to, the city wouldn't have to raise tax, property taxes? If so, if it came to that, would you be in favor of doing such a thing? Go ahead, one minute.
Well, I don't, from, from what little bit we do know, I don't know of any way we could take it and not be looking at some tax increase. Just because besides the acquisition cost, means getting it from the county, there are what are called maintenance of effort costs that the state expects us to put in, which we don't have to do now because we, it's not our school, but we would have to, you know, if we acquired the school. And, you know, I, I think that again gets back to the whole issue of what is the cost because, you know, one cent, two cent, three cent, that's not that much. 20 or 30 cent is totally out of the question. So, you know, until we know numbers, you know, I, I don't think there's any way we could do it without some increase.
Okay, all right, and we'll come down to Branham for our next question, just staying with the topics that you hear out in town and people want to discuss as you listen into a City of Sweetwater political forum with the candidates for city commission. Early voting starts tomorrow. Early voting will end June 7th, Election Day will be June 12th and you're going to vote for two of these men, two seats available, three of them running. Our next topic, Branham, I'll have you lead off. Everybody wants to talk about TMG, it looks like that's probably going toward a, a tax sale. What would you, I mean, this is a hypothetical, but what would you like to see happen to TMG that you think would be most beneficial for the City of Sweetwater? I know that's a loaded question, but I know that's something that probably all have thought about. If you were king for a day, what would you like to see happen with that property? And you've got one minute, go ahead.
Well, the TMG property would be, make a great area for the community to use, but it'd also make a great area for some development. So I would like to see in a perfect world where it could be a, a private part, a private public partnership where we have a very big need for ball fields here in Sweetwater. You could use some of that land for ball field development. We have housing needs and you could have a developer develop some housing needs and meet those needs. There could be some retail development, but a private public partnership would be what I would see as an ideal situation for up there where Sweetwater was able to expand its recreational opportunities and then also have some housing development, possibly some business development, retail development, but anything would be better than what it's in right now.
Okay. Cotton, same question, TMG, you're king for a day, what would you think that property could be used to be the most benefit for the City of Sweetwater and its residents?
Well, if we got it at a good cost, if we, if we bought it and got it at a good cost, you could develop a lot of stuff in there, like you just said, ball fields and this and that and somebody might want to put some of the little homes in there or something, some little apartments or something up in there, because it's a big place, but it's, it's sad that it's gone to waste, you know what I mean? Real sad. This was about 14 years ago, when it was TMG, watching play football on that back field back there. That'd been a long time ago. See, but that's what I'd like to see done if we took it on, but what's going to be the price? That's what you're looking at. Because it's, it's really in bad shape and you'd have to probably just demolish nearly all of it to have to start back and that's going to cost.
Jim, same question, and the, what scenario happening up there do you think would benefit in the long run the City of Sweetwater and its citizens for the TMG property?
Well, of course, if it goes to a tax sale, what you're probably going to have is a private developer. So a lot of it will depend on what they see as being possible up there. I'm sort of like Cotton, I'd like to see part of it go to some housing for folks that want to live here in Sweetwater. Right now it's on R1, which is the most restrictive, has to be single family situations. It would be an area where we could have some athletic facilities, ball fields and that sort of thing, if that developer was willing to let the city take part in that. But, you know, it'll depend, I guess, on who buys it and how much they're willing to put into it to get control of it.
Okay, very good. So move on to the other topic I would consider top three right now, and there's others, but, and we'll start with Cotton on this one, the rec center. And now I know some of you are not in on the decision, but you know, that's moving forward, but basically I want to know your opinion again of how that rec center can best be used? What should it entail? What type of amenities in there and what type of offerings do you think it would need to best suit the citizens of Sweetwater? And talking about the rec center, Cotton, you got one minute.
Well, that would be nice, that down there would be nice if you get it, if you afford it, but they don't want you spending too much money on it. That's what people are looking at, how much money are you going to spend on it? And if it's way out of whack, nobody wants it. I can understand what you're talking about and we probably need that too, but it's going to be a big cost to get that done, guarantee it will be. When you start doing that, it's going to cost some money, one way or the other, but if they can get it, that's fine, but if it's too high, I don't think we need it. That's just my opinion.
All right, let's come on to Jim here. Jim, that rec center, what type of thing does it need to encompass to you think to be the best benefit for the citizens of Sweetwater? You got a minute?
Well, I think, you're, you're talking about the community center project right downtown.
Yeah, I think rec center, community center.
Old, old utility board building downtown, the blue building, I think everybody calls it. I think it's a good opportunity for us to have some indoor space. It's an opportunity for us to provide some recreational opportunities for the children in our community, like during the winter months, it'll be a place where they could come and be inside, taking part in things. Also, the plans that have been drawn up include facilities for us to maybe have space available for senior citizen activities, also for educational activities, you know, people have GED classes, that sort of thing, and of course some wifi access as well. So I think it's an opportunity for us to provide a lot to all the different parts of the community if we do it correctly.
My apologies, I was saying rec center, community center, y'all know what I was talking about. Branham, same, it's the same to you on this, what amenities do you think that that facility needs to have that would best benefit, its uses would best benefit the citizens?
Well, I definitely think that the, the center is needed, a rec center is needed. I don't like the parking situation there, but you can't really help that at this point. Some of the amenities that need, we need really, we need space for people to be able to hold meetings and have, we need space for people to have classes for different things like Jim said, GED. You need some athletic areas, possibly a workout center, possibly some, an indoor area where you could have a tennis court and some pivotal ball courts. All sorts of ideas there that I think people have thought of, that they're thinking through. That facility will be a great asset to, to Sweetwater. Again, the location's not the best, but at this point I feel like it's probably a pretty good situation because I feel like, or I understand that a lot of that's going to be paid for with grant money. So that, that's very helpful to Sweetwater, that the taxpayers don't have to, to pay that through their city taxes.
Very good. You're listening to Political Forum with the candidates for Sweetwater City Commission. Early voting starts tomorrow, May 23rd. Early voting ends on June 7th and Election Day on June 12th. We want to appreciate, say thank you to Fairweather Financial and Jim Fairweather for sponsoring our forums. We'll also have a conversation with candidate for mayor Angie Kyle this evening as well and actually air before this one. So as we move on here in our discussion, Jim, you will lead this one off and we'll continue with a minute to answer. Just want to know your overall vision of Sweetwater. It's obvious that a lot of people have moved here, Sweetwater is growing. Where's your balance between continued exponential growth versus keeping Sweetwater with the charm of Sweetwater? What's, what's your vision there?
Okay. You know, sort of a popular phrase, a lot of people use in planning right now is smart growth. I'll go back to my days, 20 years ago when I was here, there was a fellow named Randall Aaron that had a book he put out called Rural by Design. And his premise was basically that you plan for growth and expansion, but you don't give away what you've already got in order to achieve that. And you know, if you look at our situation, you know, when, when Red Stag came in and they were saying they'd bring 3,500 jobs to Sweetwater, well, you know, we've got two housing projects, folks bought land for out here on 68 that, that I know of, one of them's cornfield now and the other one I don't think is anything. So, you know, I think we can maintain the home part of Sweetwater and still have good jobs and opportunities for folks to enjoy living here.
Okay, we'll come to Cotton next. Cotton, how your, what's your balance? What's your vision from Sweetwater? You know, you've got all the growth and how do we still keep it, Sweetwater as we have known it, the small little community? What's, what's your vision there? How do you manage that?
I think already Sweetwater's growing because you see a lot of people putting up a bunch of double wide stuff and a lot of people's moving in here, just, just a little job down over the dinner bell, half the whole lot. I know about 10 to 15 people, Mays County worker, 10 to 15 Matthews, I said, where y'all going? We going to Sweetwater, going to work up here. And, and that's half the lot too, because really, basketball's been great, but we hadn't, hadn't, I've worked around here except the industrial park up there, but people's got to go out of town to go to work and make their bigger money. I can understand that. Like go to Old Reggie I-4 or somewhere like that, but Athens got a lot of plants down there and that, that Nenzel plants, they got three of them and they stay pretty busy. They work people, we got 15 and 20 feet in Sweetwater, I know, working Nenzel, good paying jobs there, you know, but we doing pretty good.
Branham, same to you, Sweetwater seeing growth, but then how do you manage that and keep Sweetwater with the charm that we all have grown up knowing here? So your thoughts, one minute.
So Sweetwater is definitely growing. We see it in traffic, we see it in a development of, you see, you know, housing and with Red Stag. One of the things that being on planning, planning commission has taught me is that there are a lot of people who want to put something up in Sweetwater, want to build something. So as, as long as we, as long as we have our regulations and our, our rules and ordinances in place, we can be smart and have smart growth so that we don't have a housing development that has 400 houses in 150 acres or so. You want to protect, you want to protect your town, you want to protect the, why people like Sweetwater. People like Sweetwater because it's small, they like Sweetwater because it's friendly, they like Sweetwater because it's convenient. So you want to, to take those in consideration, you want to take that, that, those conveniences and those things that Sweetwater likes and not change those in your growth. So as far as I'm concerned, Sweetwater is doing a great job of, of maintaining its small town feel while also growing a bit.
Okay, Cotton is going to lead off the next and we'll continue with the, the growth theme. With population growth comes a lot of additional, problems may not be the right word, but things to consider. You're talking about traffic, roads, housing, needed in extra employees for the city, things like that, but we'll start with, with roads. Cotton, your thoughts? If you, in a weekday, when school's in at 3 o'clock downtown Sweetwater, you're going to be set in a while. It used to not be that way, really as congested it is now. What does Sweetwater need to do to kind of overcome some of that congestion in the area, especially in the afternoons? Let's make it a 30-second answer on this.
Well, that's a big question there, but that's not only Sweetwater, you're going to have that everywhere. You're going to have that everywhere. People's getting off of work and then you got a lot of people just likes to ride, you know, and that's just the way it is. Athens same way. 3:00, 3:00, 4:00, they just bumper to bumper. That's just like it is, you go anywhere else. People getting off and stuff and then, a lot of people come to Sweetwater, see what's going on up there. Especially downtown.
All right. Jim, this population growth added with schools, you know, traffic is becoming an issue. How do you manage that? Can our roads maintain that, secondary roads? What's your thoughts as far as the traffic issue in Sweetwater, especially if things continue to grow here? 30 seconds.
Well, I think the one, we're very fortunate to have Commissioner Jinx on our commission now. She's really taken a handle on the road department and the street department and I know they've developed a 10-year plan with Guard of the Roads and I think she would like to look at maybe developing some alternative routes where if you're coming north to south at that time period, maybe you can go around instead of knowing that you don't want to come up highway left.
Okay, very good. Going down to Branham. Branham, continue this thought, you have 30 seconds about with this added growth and everything, traffic issues.
Well, it's not, it's not uncommon for every, every town that's growing has traffic problems and so it's something we're going to have to deal with right now. Long-term though, I think it's a funding issue with the state. I think the state needs to invest more money into, into transportation, road transportation, giving the, the local governments more money. So I would say it's an issue of our, our body of, of our, our commission, our county commission, our city commission, those folks need to be talking to our legislature about getting more funding available to our town and our communities.
These are three candidates for Sweetwater City Commission. Early voting starts tomorrow. So again, we encourage people to get out and vote. I want to give a little stop right here for just a moment. The last cycle, there's approximately 500 people voted in the City of Sweetwater. That's, that's terrible. More people need to get involved in local government and at least vote, even if you don't run. I'd like to see more people even run, no offense to you guys, but I'd like to see more people get involved, but get out and vote and get registered, maybe too late to, if you're not registered to vote in this cycle, but get registered so you can vote next time. But please, get involved. This, this matters to your everyday life. The city and your, your local government matters more to your everyday life than even state and federal. So I encourage you to get involved in that way. I want to thank Fairweather Financial for sponsoring our forums tonight. Thank Jim and his community-involved business for helping us put this on. So once again, thank you Fairweather Financial. Now we'll continue on having our discussion with the candidates for Sweetwater City Commission and lost track, who led off the last one?
Did you cotton?
Cotton did.
Yeah.
All right, so Jim, we're at the gym, that way lead off this one. Just briefly, are there any policies or changes policy-wise? If you'd like to introduce something new or a change you'd like to see to an existing policy, I would like to know that. Any thoughts on that? Jim, 30 seconds. That's a loaded one. Anything you'd like to see policy-wise or anything in, in the City of Sweetwater you think need to get a better handle on that you'd like to see a policy?
No, Brian, nothing I would, you know, look at what's going on now and say, I think this needs to be done differently. Of course, again, all of the things we've talked about up to this point could create situations where we're going to have to address a lot of things. Like you mentioned earlier, personnel-wise, budget-wise and, and a lot of different ways. So I just think mostly it's, it's sort of keeping our head about ourselves going forward. Don't let our wants get out ahead of our abilities to do things and, you know, make sure we're making wise and considered decisions and not just spur of the moment.
Okay, Cotton, is there any policy you would like to see administered or anything policy-wise you'd like to see changed, that you'd like to see done differently in the City of Sweetwater? Go ahead, 30 seconds.
Well, so far they're doing a pretty good job down here. I ain't got no complaints, but a lot of times you, you make decisions when you face with them. So right now things probably running pretty good, shit's running good, but when it ain't running good, you're going to have to make some changes. And that's just the way I feel.
Okay. Brannum, same question to you. Anything that you would like to see done differently policy wise? Anything you'd like to see changed policy wise, done differently in the city of Sweetwater?
So policies are, are, some policies are living documents. They, they change, they evolve. And so I think we would have to, as, as we continue to grow, as things change, policies will have to change. And I don't know, sitting right here today, what policies need to be changed, but I'm sure there are some that need a little tweaking. And that will be done as, as I think people, policies come, like the other guys have said, is when you are faced with a situation, you see that you need a policy for it and you would, you would develop a policy. But yes, I, I think the policies are definitely, they will evolve as the town grows.
Okay. Stay right there, we'll lead off you. Let's tack this a different way. So is everything perfect in the city of Sweetwater? I would surely venture to say everybody's going to say no. So what is the weakness of the city of Sweetwater? That you're coming in as a commissioner that you are looking to make a difference in? 30 seconds.
Well, a weakness that I see is, and it's not a policy weakness, it's a weakness that when you get off the interstate in Sweetwater at exit 60, that used to be a booming, that was a huge booming exit between Chattanooga and Knoxville. And it's a shadow of itself today. We've done such a good job, our Sweetwater's done such a good job in downtown that we need to take some of that energy and we need to move that out toward the interstate. Because if we could get more people off of the exits come through our town, that's just more revenue for our, our city and tax dollars that the property tax holders don't have to, to pay. So I would say that development from the interstate to downtown is, is a, is a key to future growth for Sweetwater.
Okay. So Cotton, same question to you. You're coming in as commissioner, you're running to, to do something differently, I would assume. What, what's the weakness for Sweetwater that you would like to take on and, and make a difference in?
Well, you, like you said, you, when you come into Sweetwater, it's, I like to see some things go up, move and, and, and taken down. It's like the old window seat, you go through town, you go on 95, there are towns out that way. Everything on both sides and it, and it's pretty neat. Of course, I go up there sometime and eat, but a lot of people go that way. But we doing pretty good and I like to see us probably about and get a good restaurant here. But that's down the road or something. I like to have Bojangles, but we don't have one and they can have Kentucky Fried Chicken. I wouldn't eat it, be able to me.
All right.
I doubt they're going to give it to you, Cotton.
Bleep that part out.
I think coming in.
Well, what Jim, weaknesses, what's a weakness that you, you think Sweetwater has that you would like to be an influence of change in?
I would like to see us have more of sort of a comprehensive, long range idea of what we'd like Sweetwater to become. Our planning commission, as Brannum was explaining, does a great job with, you know, reviewing proposals as they come in for development. But I think it's up to the city commission to create situations where developers want to come here to make sure we have the ability to help them come here and that we know what we would like to see here rather than just, you know, somebody pops in with an idea, oh yeah, that's great here, put it here. You know, for us as a commission to have a vision for what we would like the community to be in 10 years or 15 years.
Okay. All right, we'll go to Cotton to start this next one. And I just want to personally say, Cotton, I love Kentucky Fried Chicken. I just miss me, I just miss you. What, what can the city of Sweetwater do better? Already doing a good job, but what can the city of Sweetwater do better to be more inviting, to draw more business? Do you have any thoughts there? 30 seconds.
Bringing more business in? Well, you got to have someplace where they can put it. Main thing, if you got any property they can get. Of course, you want your businesses downtown. You don't want them way out of town, you want them downtown. Downtown's going here, done a good job on Front Street. People come in here just to go downtown, need big one and they spend money here. And we got these two shops on the front street, South Club and stuff.
All right, Brannum, you think Sweetwater can do to improve, to even do a better job of growing business and revitalizing the business community in the city of Sweetwater?
I, I think the city's done a great job of, of economic development, especially in the downtown area. Like I said earlier, maybe kind of pushing that economic development. The idea of economic development may be out 68 toward the interstate or possibly Oakland Road, you know, to, to exit 62, I believe. But the city itself has done a great job with economic development and I don't see a, a problem. I think they've incubated several businesses. And the fact that Sweetwater relies more on tax dollars than it does on property tax is a testament to the fact that economic development is working within Sweetwater.
Yeah, Jim, same thing to you, 30 seconds. Economic development, city of Sweetwater, anything that can even boost that even more?
Well, we have encouraged some of our employees to go and become better trained in, in engaging in economic development. So I think that's been a good step. We need to make sure that the regulations we have in place for development aren't too restrictive. I would like to see us find some folks who wanted to put some effort into developing housing in our community. You know, I, I think for us to grow as a community, we need to have folks who want to and can afford to live here. And, you know, we just need to make sure we've got things in place that allow people to do that and don't restrict them and keep them from doing it.
Okay, very good. And then we'll go back down to Brannum to start this one. And Jim kind of says what segues us. We've talked about population growth some and with that comes a need for housing. You just mentioned housing. You mentioned a couple of developments earlier that really hadn't gotten off the ground. But I want to talk about, about housing and the need for housing that families can afford and all these things that families are facing. And I know there's some things that the commission can do to make that environment a little bit better, but don't have too much control over that. But Brannum, what would you like to see housing wise in, in Sweetwater improved? In what way? Just your thoughts on the housing overall and where it stands right now in the city of Sweetwater? 30 seconds.
So Sweetwater does have a bit of a housing shortage. There's very high end housing and then there's very low end housing. There's government housing. Housing is, there's, there's several different aspects of housing that could be, could be improved. We, we could have some more, more affordable housing that's not government subsidized housing. I would like to see maybe more of that and, and not just popping up mobile homes or, or apartment complexes, but maybe some condos or some, not necessarily housing, but multi tenant housing where people can buy their, their, their real estate. Cause I believe it's something like 30% of the people in Sweetwater own their housing, I think. So I'd like to see that number go up. So housing is, is one of those things that there's a lot to it that you have to, you, do you want huge housing developments with no amenities? Or do you want housing development with, with amenities? So it's just, it's, there's, we've got to figure out what to do there, for sure.
Cotton, your thoughts on housing and what needs to happen in the city of Sweetwater as far as that goes? You got, I actually ended up giving Brannum a minute, so I'm going to give the rest of you two guys a minute because it's a pretty big topic. So Cotton, one minute.
On the housing now, Brannum summed it up pretty good. You got to have these lower ones try to, try to take care of these people. It's got babies and stuff and low income, but if you go rent an apartment now, or two bedroom, it costs you 12, 1200, $1300 a month. And then, and him and his wife working a next to the dying job, got a couple of kids. That's why the government, his housing projects give them a break. Some of them live for little or nothing. Of course, they got kids, but that's just the way it is, you know? But it's just tough cookie to try to crack, really, what I think.
Yeah. Okay. Jim, housing, your thoughts on housing in the city of Sweetwater?
Yeah, we do have a housing shortage and, and I think we need to do what we can to make sure that our development regulations permit folks to come in here and, and have developments at a cost that they can afford to provide. But it also needs to be housing that people can afford to either buy or, or rent. You know, we also have taken some steps through USDA grants, CDBG grants to obtain funds through the federal government to permit people to upgrade existing housing. And sometimes that helps, you know? It makes it a better home, gives those people an opportunity to improve their living situation. But, you know, when you've got a situation, I think the latest numbers I saw in Tennessee, the average cost of a home was a little over $400,000. And the average income you needed to buy that home was around $122,000. So something's got to give somewhere and we need to work on it.
We'll stay right here with you, Jim. You can start this next question. Before we get to that, I want to say thank you for listening and watching this political forum, city of Sweetwater City Commission candidates. And of course we've got video going on Facebook and YouTube and of course listening on WMTY 98.3, WEHAM 800 in Sweetwater and online at mytrueoldies.com. I think Fairweather Financial for sponsoring this tonight. Also want to thank Jim there at Fairweather Financial. He gave me a couple of questions, suggestions. I also want to thank Tommy Millsaps, good buddy Tommy Millsaps, has submitted some questions as well. Staying with this housing, this is kind of in that same vein, housing topic. Homelessness, people without homes. We are, I think we are seeing a growing population of homelessness here in Sweetwater. How do, how do we manage that? How do we handle that? How do we improve that situation, Jim? And that's a, a big question, so I'll give you a minute.
Okay. Well, we do have a homeless issue here. I don't know if a lot of people are particularly aware of it, but we do have one. It's helped somewhat by the folks out on top of the ridge, providing some, some relief to that. You know, and again, you, you have to sort of balance trying to help folks out with inviting problems, I guess. What, what you don't want to, you want to help folks that are homeless, that maybe this has been their home and now they find themselves out on the street. Need to help them get back on their feet. What we don't want to do is become sort of a, a, a stop for a transient pipeline of folks who are migrating from one town to another or one state to another, because they're not going to be living here. They're not looking for a job here and, and, you know, we want to avoid that. So we need to encourage, I think, you know, the ability of folks to help one another and be careful how we do it.
Cotton, homeless situation in Sweetwater, how does that need to be handled? Got a minute?
It's hard to say that because, you know, a lot of them, really from different families, they don't have to be homeless. It's just like the other morning down your service station, I pulled in and get a paper, boy sitting on stool, not the car. I said, what is it? He said, I'd like to have a sausage and business cup of coffee. I said, come on inside. I said, tell that girl give it to me. I said, I'm going to pay for it. I'm not giving you no money. But then after I go back outside, he smoking cigarette and got a cell phone. But that's just what you deal with. Like Jim said, that's just a hard thing to tackle homelessness, but it ain't only here in Sweetwater, it's everywhere. It seem like it's going to get worse or two. Guarantee you that. Thank God I'm not homeless, put it that way.
Yep. Very good. Brannum, homelessness in Sweetwater, how can city government approach that and improve that, if anything?
Well, the city government can approach that in the fact that they could help some of these, encourage organizations like, there's an organization called Shelter My Sheep that has duplexes up on Fair Street that let, let folks live there for a month while they're getting their, their feet on the ground. And there are stringent rules, just like Jim said, you don't want to create a pipeline. You don't want to create a stop off on the, on the interstate travel of homelessness. So it's a very fine line to, to have there is what do you do to help? And how can you help but not, not just, you know, keep them from wanting to or desiring to, to have a place of their own? But yes, the city can, could help that, that we could authorize some kind of studies, some way of, of looking at, at the population and what we need to do to, to help them. But yes, there are organizations out there that we could help support.
Very good. We'll start this next one with Cotton. We've got a couple more questions before we wrap things up. And this will be a 30 second answer. We've talked a lot about growth and with that, do you think the city of Sweetwater is going to be facing the need to hire additional employees, whether it be firefighters, police officers, whatever it may be? Do you think Sweetwater will be facing that situation in the near future? 30 seconds, Cotton.
Way things look pretty good now. If things keep picking up like they're going to, which we, we're moving on up stuff, yeah, you're going to be harassing people. You harass them in the street department, you harass them in the regulation. Might have some policemen, I don't know, but when you get big growth, you got to house more people, whether you want to or not, to get the job done. Now, if you don't want to get the job done, just don't harass nobody. That's what you run into.
Okay. Jim, we're be facing the need to hire more city employees in the near future? Your thoughts?
Well, we probably will as we do things like develop the community center. Obviously, we're going to have to have folks there to run it and operate it and take care of it, maintain it, once it's operational. In the fire department, we recently, I think this past budget year, added three full time firemen. So we think we've got the fire department where it needs to be for the foreseeable future. We have enough police officers to, you know, take care of the patrols and investigations at the moment. A place you may need some more folks would be recreation and the street department. But we'll, we'll know, we'll see that coming. We try to pay attention to that pretty closely.
Brannum, down here to him, 30 seconds. Do you see Sweetwater will have the need to hire additional employees to serve the growing population in the city of Sweetwater in the near future?
Well, just like any business or any organization, as it grows, you're going to need more people to, to service the, the folks that are citizens and visitors. And so yes, there will be a need to, to hire those folks and hopefully there'll be a way of funding that through more sales tax generation as the, as the city grows and, and property tax generation as, as people build more homes. So yes, you would need to hire more people, I'm sure.
All right, we'll have one more question before we get to time for your closing thoughts. And Brannum, we'll start with you and we'll go down the line on this, a minute on this answer. Now, we've talked about varying topics and so I ask you on this, outside of the issues we've already talked about, okay? Outside of the issues we've already talked about, what is the biggest issue facing the city of Sweetwater? Something other than what we've talked about, in your opinion, and you've got a minute. Brannum, we'll start with you.
Well, I would say one of the biggest issues that's facing Sweetwater in the next few years is that Sweetwater has been able to utilize grant funding for a lot of things over the last few years. Been able to utilize grant funding. And so with the federal government cutting a lot of grants, I feel like that's probably going to be something that is going to have to be looked at. And it will have to be, I guess, things will have to be more closely watched because if you're not able to fund things with grants, then you're going to have to put it toward, your budget items toward that. So that's one of those things. It's not a challenge at this point yet, but I, I believe that may be coming down the line.
Okay. Cotton, outside of the things we've spoke about so far today, what is the biggest issue facing the city of Sweetwater?
Well, city of Sweetwater, biggest issues to face and when you want to do something and try to get it done and you, and you depend on the grant money to get something done and they don't show up. Whatever project it is, that's going to hurt it. See what I mean? But that, that grant money is good because if you can get it, but it might take you a while to get it. But you need to get this done now, but you can't always wait on that grant money if you've got the money to get that done. That's just the way I see it. That's just the way I see it.
Hey, Jim, biggest issue facing Sweetwater outside of what we've already talked about? One minute.
I think because of all the things we've talked about, probably the hardest work we've got going forward in the next few years is gonna be our budget. What can we afford? What would we like to do? Uh, how can we get it done? Um, and, and what's a responsible way to try to pay for it? So I think, uh, finding the money to do the things we'd like to do is gonna be our biggest challenge moving forward.
Okay. All right, so we'll wrap this thing up, uh, with a minute. We'll go back to Cotton here, let him lead this side. A minute, you've got the opportunity here. You got people listening on the radio, you got people watching on Facebook, YouTube. Um, the best opportunity you have to talk to the largest number of people at one time that may be voting. Hopefully it's more than five hundred this time, we'll see. But appeal to the people watching and listening. Why should they vote for you? You got one minute.
Well, I'll say this to you. I might not be the best candidate, but don't cotton up and get the job done. You can take that to the bank, I'll get the job done. Say, if I start something, I'm gonna stay right with it. That's the only way to be, that's waiting them running. And everybody needs to get out and vote. That's your telephone, we can vote more people than them. That's what I like to see, but I don't believe that's gonna happen. Cause we won't come to meetings, but we're gripe about something all the time. People like that, they want something all the time and they gripe. We don't vote, just keep your mouth shut. Tell all them that. If you ain't gonna vote, this, this, I don't worry about it no more. I don't believe it's that, that's all we can do. That's what I'm gonna do.
All right, Brannum, you'll be next. So you've got people watching and listening. Why should they vote for Brannum Lovey? You got a minute?
Okay, so I would say this first. Go ahead and, and plan, plan to vote early, uh, plan to vote on election day, but make a plan to vote, because we do. We have five thousand some odd residents and we only have five hundred people voting. We need more people to vote, more people to take, uh, action and to be a part of this. Why do you need to vote for me? Well, I've been on the planning commission for about ten years now and I've seen, um, I've, I've, I've seen how Sweetwater grows and how Sweetwater's managed. And, um, I've enjoyed learning that aspect of it, but I'd also like to, to take the next logical step, which be, would be being a city commissioner. I'm a business owner, I live within a budget. I understand how budgets work and I am going to do what is best for Sweetwater. Uh, maybe not always what is the most popular, but what is best and always will do what is right. So I would appreciate your vote. Again, make a plan, go vote.
All right. Why should folks vote for Jim Stutz? You got a minute, sir?
All right, thank you, Brian. Um, I would hope folks would look at the job I've done the past three years, uh, and the work that was done when I was here as a commissioner and mayor before, uh, and see experience, uh, and commitment, uh, and knowledge that can be valuable going forward, that can provide answers and help find solutions to the situations we do face, whether it's the school or TMG or roads or homelessness or housing or whatever, uh, that we can put the thought into it and find solutions, um, to have Sweetwater continue to be the place we want it to be. Um, and, uh, you know, I had the good fortune of, uh, my wife, uh, chasing me till I caught her and, uh, have lived here since, uh, nineteen eighty-three. I consider it home. Uh, my children were born here and I would like to see it be a good place for everyone's children to grow up and live and call home in turn.
Thank you very much. Uh, that is our forum for candidates for Sweetwater City Commission. Again, early voting starts tomorrow, May twenty-third. Early voting will end on June seventh. Election day will be on June twelfth. Now you'll vote for two of these three men. Two of these three men will be, uh, commissioners for the next four years. So please get out and vote. Gentlemen, I will say thank you for doing this. Thank you for running. Thank you for having the courage of running and opening yourself up to, uh, a criticism and all the things that come with that. And thank you for wanting to serve. We appreciate everyone listening, watching, and we appreciate Fairweather Financial for sponsoring our forum. Jim Fairweather, for your financial planning needs. Guys, many, city of Sweetwater many to talk about Jim, uh, financial planning. Uh, I'm just kidding, but we appreciate Jim, if you're, uh, trying to plan for the future retirement and all those things. Fairweather Financial in downtown Sweetwater is the place to go. Thank you for listening to this political forum right here on W M T Y and W D E H.